Public hearing will come to order. Clerk will call the room.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Ferreira?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing has been made in seconded or in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now open. We have one item. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., for three new jointly owned pole locations as follows. On Robin Street, three new jointly owned pole locations and one new jointly owned anchor. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid is proposing to install three jointly owned poles and one jointly owned anchor along the west side of Robin Street, beginning at a point approximately 175 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Robin Street and Dickerson Street and continuing approximately 245 feet northerly. Proposed pole number three will be set approximately 85 feet north of existing pole number two to service 121 Robin Street. Pole number four, pole number five, and the anchor will be set another 80 feet apart continuing northerly to service an undeveloped Lot Two parcel number D dash 05 dash 0035 assess its plan in the future. In accordance with Plan Number 30974496, are there any proponents to this public hearing? Any proponents at all, please come down, state your name and what company you represent for the record. I appreciate it.
Aaron Roy, 1250 Brayton Point Road, Somerset, representing National Grid. Good evening, Mr. President and City Council.
Good evening.
Just as you said, National Grid is requesting three jointly owned poles along the west side of Robin Street and one jointly owned anchor. For the first house being built at 121 Robin Street, poles three will be located on the property line of 155 and 121. Poles four and five in the jointly owned anchor will be set in the future for when Lot Two is developed. These poles will be approximately 80 to 85 feet apart from each other, only with secondaries run, no primaries. That concludes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, I'll call for any opponents. Are there any opponents to this public hearing? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Entertaining motion to close the public hearing has been made.
Second.
And seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Go right to the finance. City Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. The clerk will call the room.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Ferreira?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing has been made in seconded or in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Go right to the finance. City Council Committee on Finance will now come to order. The clerk will call the room.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Ferreira?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repozo?
Here.
Sampson?
Here.
President Kamara?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and not deemed acknowledged and permissible. Before we begin a public hearing, item number one, we have citizen's input time. We have one individual who signs up prior to citizens, prior to the finance and two others who will speak when finance is over. First, we have Renee Brown, subject matter, public service.
I might have signed up for the wrong time. Anyways, my name is Rena Brown of 105.
I want to remind them when you have three minutes, Ms. Brown.
I'll give the two and a half.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Washington and the rest of the councilors for
You can sit and make yourself comfortable.
Awarding a citation to Christopher Sylvia of Christopher's. I just want to say that I love Fall River and it's obvious that Chris, Christopher and Nate love Fall River. He has managed to reinvigorate civic pride by a number of projects. And I know him personally and professionally. I don't think he does it to get his name in the paper or to be popular. He truly is a humble individual. He'll be here later on tonight to receive it. And I can tell you, he's nervous and excited at the same time. But he has done things like has a free library outside of his place of business. He organizes volunteers to clean and beautify areas of Fall River. And he's invigorated people in the community to get out there and clean their doorway, weed their streets. I mean, we have a fantastic DPW and they do the best job they can with what they have. But it's wonderful to see individuals, other citizens of Fall River express the same love for Fall River that I can say all of us have. And I don't think there are many people as deserving as Christopher and Nate are of this citation. And again, I want to thank the council for recognizing his ability to engage the community in this "Make Fall River Beautiful Again" kind of campaign that he's embarked on. Thank you.
Well said.
Thank you. Next, we have item number two, interviews of the firms provided by the Director of Financial Services regarding quotes for annual independent audit from the following. So, to my colleagues, I think we were, we reached out to all the three firms and told them if they could make a 15 to 20 minute presentation. I think we should hear all three presentations and then if councils have questions, we can have them come down and answer questions rather than get into questions and, you know, go on and it'll be quicker that way. All right, let's hear all three presentations and then if the councils have additional questions, we can have everybody come to the table and we can ask them questions accordingly if there's any or you want to refer. First, I'd like to call up the Markham LLP. Just state your name, please, and your address and I think we know what the company is and then just you can begin your presentation. And please speak directly into the microphone. You can pull it closer to you if need be. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. We are representing Markham LLP. We are 100 Westminster Street, Street in Providence, Rhode Island. My name is Kyle Connors, an audit partner out of our Providence office, having spent the last 15 years of my career dedicated to municipal auditing, auditing various cities, towns, school districts, utility districts, which is the constructs of the city's financials. I lived in Fall River for about 10 years. I owned a home over by Diamond, so I'm very familiar with the city. I live across the bridge now in Somerset, so local to the city, very easy access to be on site with you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Wilkinson. I'm an audit partner with Markham, again, in the same office as Kyle, 100 Westminster Street in Providence. I lead our New England governmental assurance practice. In that practice within New England, we have about 100 individuals now, over 400 clients. Certainly, when Kyle and I put the proposal together, we did study the city's finances, the scope of the job. We prepared our proposal accordingly based on the number of hours we anticipated that the engagement would require. We did not prepare a formal presentation tonight. Our thought was just to have more question and answer period, so I guess our presentation will be rather brief. And if you do have questions on the proposal, which I know you've all seen, we'd be happy to answer those after the other initial presentations.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll have Hague and Sahadi and Company.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Andrew Lima. I'm here with Megan Hyland. We're here to represent Hague Sahadi and Company. We'll do a brief introduction of the team and we will then get into an introduction of the firm. But thank you for the opportunity tonight. We're pleased to be here. I have 17 years' experience in the field for municipal finance, performing audits for cities, towns, special districts, school districts, et cetera. I hold a certification in governmental finance as well that I obtained back in 2017. My role with the team is I'm responsible for the management of the audit work plan, the procedures over the financial statement at the field work level, the compliance testing, single audit procedures, and the overview of the review of the city's internal controls, which are also done in conjunction with the team. Megan here has 12 years of experience, some with our firm, some with a firm in Providence. She's a licensed CPA in Massachusetts. Her role is similar to mine in that of the audit. We're both the team leaders, as we put it. We have two staff members who work for us as well, Robert Russell and Nelson Trinidad. Robert has seven years' experience. He's since been promoted from senior to supervisor. Megan was promoted as well. Your proposal indicates otherwise as it's dated of April. Nelson has three years with our firm. Mary, the partner, Mary Sahadi, over 40 years' experience. She has the role of ensuring that the firm's system of quality control is in place. She reviews our work papers, the financial reports, all the documentation behind the scenes that are required based on the audit standards. And I think it's important to note that our team performs most of the transaction testing. Mary doesn't come out and do any of that. It's a very high level review. If there were to be any findings, recommendations, et cetera, they're going to come from our team from the field level. We're located right down the, right down the road, 126 President Avenue. Our firm currently has 17 employees, 10 of those are audit staff. The rest are tax and legal. We anticipate staffing for individuals to the city's audit should we be awarded the contract. As I mentioned earlier, our specialty is government finance, governmental audits. I'd say 95% of our time is spent in that field. We do have a few for-profit audits, et cetera. But this team is predominantly municipal only and my team is beyond that predominantly Massachusetts only with the exception of a few clients. We're the current auditors for the city of New Bedford, also the city of Attleboro, as well as the town of Seekonk and the town of Middleborough. We also have extensive experience with assisting our clients to prepare for the submission of the annual comprehensive financial report. And for those of you that are not familiar, that's a technical award certification that you present your financial statements in front of a board similar to yourself and it is graded for technical excellence according to the GFOA. So that's the body that runs the award process, the Government Finance Officer Association. For fiscal year 2022, only 1,855 awards were earned nationwide for those municipalities with a population under 300,000 residents. One of those, 1,855, was the city of New Bedford, which won in 2022, which is one of the audits that we assist with. 47 across the Commonwealth were awarded. That obviously excludes Boston because their population is higher than 300,000. For further details regarding our experience and our references, those are on page 31 of our technical proposal. We consider ourselves to be leader in servicing governmental organizations and we feel like we're the most qualified firm to perform the city's audit. We're going to go through a basic outline of the audit objectives and the audit process and work plan. I'm going to start off and then we'll, we'll hand it off to Megan. The audit of the city's financials will be conducted in accordance with U.S. government, excuse me, generally accepted auditing standards. It will also be conducted with those standards applicable to governmental auditing standards and also the standards with respect to the single audit that are in uniform guidance. Our audit objective is for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the fair presentation of the city's financials in accordance with GAAP or generally accepted accounting principles. Audits do not make a detailed examination of all transactions, only those that are deemed material, which is left up to our professional judgment based on our risk assessment. For example, in the first year of audit, we'll only be looking at the transactions from July 2023 to June 2024. Prior transactions will have already been audited, so, you know, including your grants, so your ARPA, your ESSR, community development, clean water grants, anything like that you might have. We'll also evaluate the city's internal control systems and we'll identify any findings we might have or other recommendations and we'll communicate those to you. We're also available to provide any other technical assistance the city requires as requested. Typically, in a municipal setting, the audit firm assists with the drafting of the financial statements and the city has to designate someone who has the skill, knowledge, and experience in signing off and in ensuring that those non-audit services are performed correctly and that they understand them. Anytime the city needed help with the preparation of the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, we could, we could provide that service as well. And we have also assisted with free cash certifications in the past that, again, are signed off on by the city. Early in the audit process, the city will be provided with an engagement letter and it's going to outline the services to be performed. Such items that'll be on there are the audit scope and objectives, auditor responsibilities, the audit procedures over internal controls, the audit procedures over compliance with laws and regulations, grant agreements, et cetera. Other services to be provided, should those be the non-audit services that I mentioned earlier, management's responsibility with respect to the financial statements in the single audit, the engagement, administration, and fees, so, you know, the fee for the audit, how it will be billed, et cetera. And also the issuance of what reports we're going to issue at the end of the audit. We request that both management and governance, so typically the city council president, sign off on that letter to acknowledge that they've, that they've seen it and that they understand it. After that audit engagement letter is signed, the city will be provided with a general audit request listing, which lists the major items needed to get the audit going. For example, the listing will contain requests for the city's trial balance reports, both in summary and detail format, capital asset and depreciation schedules that are typically prepped by the city, the actuarial valuations over pension and OPEM, city and school grant documents, among other items. That's usually a 100-point list or more for a city this size. As we progress through the detailed testing, obviously, we'll request other detailed transaction listings and city management will provide those and we'll go from there. So I'm going to turn over the presentation now to Megan. Megan's going to talk with you about the audit work plan and the audit approach and also the reports that we issue at the end of the audit.
Thank you. So our audit work plan or audit approach will be organized in five phases, which are further detailed in the technical proposal, starting on page 15. Number one, planning and risk assessment, establishing an overall audit strategy, calculating materiality, obtaining knowledge of the internal control system and the control environment. We'll review policy and procedure manuals, meeting minutes. Number two, system evaluation and tested controls. We will perform tests of controls in order to place reliance on those controls or for the purpose of other instances where substantive procedures cannot produce sufficient appropriate audit evidence. Number three, field work or substantive procedures, which include analytical procedures and tested details of the city's trial balances. That will include our proposals of audit adjustments where necessary. Number four, completion, final analytics, and follow-up. Evaluating the sufficiency and appropriateness of the audit evidence, collecting additional evidence where necessary, determine final materiality, and evaluate any misstatements identified. We will propose any other audit adjustments necessary and will begin to summarize any findings. Number five, reporting and presentation includes a technical review of the work papers and drafting reports and obtaining a formal management response to the final draft reports. Upon completion of the audit, the reports that'll be issued, which are anticipated to be filed no later than February 28th of each year. Further details on that are also in the technical proposal, starting on page 10. The independent auditor's opinion on whether the financial statements present fairly the respective financial position of the city as of each June 30th. An independent auditor's report on the city's compliance on internal control over financial reporting based on an audit of the financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. This report will communicate any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses identified during the audit. An auditor's report on the city's compliance for each major federal program on internal control over compliance and also on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. A management letter, which would include other comments and recommendations beyond those included on the reports, in the reports on internal control and compliance. Two retirement reports, one, an independent audit report over the financial statements of the Fall River retirement system and an independent audit report over the schedule of employer allocations and schedule of pension amounts by employer of the Fall River contributor, sorry.
Contributor. It's okay, Megan.
Retirement system. And then there's two agreed upon procedures reports for Fall River School District. One is the end of year report and the other is for student activity funds. And we will also be available to make a formal presentation of the results of the audit to the Finance Committee and City Council at the conclusion of all audits.
Thank you.
Upon completion of the audit, the reports that'll be issued, which are anticipated to be filed no later than February twenty-eighth of each year. Further details on that are also in the technical proposal, starting on page ten. The independent auditor's opinion on whether the financial statements present fairly the respective financial position of the city as of each June thirtieth. An independent auditor's report on the city's compliance on internal control over financial reporting, based on an audit of the financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. This report will communicate any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses identified during the audit. An auditor's report on the city's compliance for each major federal program on internal control over compliance, and also on the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. A management letter, which would include other comments and recommendations beyond those included in the reports on internal control and compliance. Two retirement reports, one, an independent audit report over the financial statements of the Fall River Retirement System, and an independent audit report over the schedule of employer allocations and schedule of pension amounts by employer of the Fall River contributor, sorry.
Contributor. It's okay, Megan.
Retirement system. And then there's two agreed-upon procedures reports for Fall River School District. One is the end-of-year report, and the other is for student activity funds. And we will also be available to make a formal presentation of the results of the audit to the finance committee and city council at the conclusion of all audits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Roselli, Clark, and Associates.
Cheap microphones. Good evening, honorable members of the Fall River City Council. You would have been provided a very brief PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to quickly go through a lot of this because it sounds like the question-and-answer section is really going to be... Have to speak up?
And give us your name?
Oh.
Put the microphone closer to you.
My name is Terenzio Vopacelli, and this is Paul Gargano. We represent the firm of Roselli, Clark, and Associates, Certified Public Accountants, with offices in Woburn, Massachusetts, and Hope Town, Massachusetts. Again, the PowerPoint presentation that you have is only about ten pages long, a little firm snapshot. The firm was founded in nineteen eighty-eight under the name of Tucci and Roselli, so it's about thirty-five years old. Our current client base represents nearly a quarter of all Massachusetts cities and towns. We're engaged in auditors for eighty Massachusetts cities and towns and over eighty-two other municipal districts, entities, school districts, and pension systems. Approximately ninety percent of the firm's revenues are in the form of governmental services, and it's managed by four CPAs with a combined experience of a hundred and twenty-seven years. The average is thirty-two years. Both Paul and myself are celebrating our twenty-ninth anniversary in the industry this year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. There's about twenty professional staff in the firm, and eleven of them are CPAs, and we stress quality service with a personalized approach. You can see in the next section how we divide the municipal division. We have what we refer as our ACFER reporting unit, municipal consulting, accounting and audit, as well as the single audit and school end-of-the-year reports. On the next slide, you can see our growth. In two thousand and eight, we had about seventeen Massachusetts cities and towns, and we've grown to over eighty cities and towns at this point. That's a compound annual growth rate of ten point nine percent. The firm has been growing at leaps and bounds. We're all members of the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, the GACQ, the Massachusetts Society of Certified Public Accountants. In fact, we chair the governmental accounting and audit group this year and actually last year also. We do ACFER reviews, and ACFER, as Mr. Lima had explained to you, is essentially a reporting award system. We're members of the Massachusetts Municipal Association, and we subscribe to Thomson Reuters Practitioners Publishing Companies, or PPC. As I mentioned, we are active in the MSCPA, the Mass Society of Certified Public Accountants' Governmental Accounting and Auditing Committee. Currently, Tony Roselli, our managing partner, and Don Piat, a senior manager in our firm, chair that committee. We currently hold five seats on that committee, and this committee meets once a month along with all the other CPA firms within the state. And we talk about what's the hot topics of the day, new accounting pronouncements, what's happening at the OMB, what's happening at DESI, what's happening at the Department of Revenue. Deb Wagner, the head of Division of Local Services, is a regular attendee, as is Jay Sullivan from the DESI. We discuss policy initiatives and positions and essentially work out these new developments before they come into effect. The next page, we just talked about some of the discussion topics that we've led over the last several years. Won't bore you with a lot of this, but some of them refer to fraud, OPEB, how to read your financial statements, guide to improving bond ratings, student activities, and single audit. The three partners assigned to this firm are myself, I'm a lead client service partner, Paul Gargano manages the single audit, and Tony Roselli does the concurring review. More detailed resumes and biographies are included in the full response to your RFP, but these are some of the highlights again. Both Paul and I are ninety-five graduates and started our careers with several different public companies, public accounting firms. Tony started in nineteen eighty-four with Deloitte Intuition has then founded this firm. So we have significant experience in this area. As I mentioned, we have a hundred and sixty-two current municipal audit clients. That's six cities, seventy-four towns, and there's eighty-two other municipal districts and entities. And since our inception, we've issued approximately a thousand single audits over the last thirty-five The next slide just shows some of the representative clients that are somewhat similar to the city of Fall River. We do Fall River, Chelsea, Malden, Medford, Nantucket, Marlborough, Falmouth, and Gloucester. And then finally, there's a graphic on the back, just some things to think about in valuation criteria. You know, what is the municipal experience of your firm that you're working with? Again, we're looking at about thirty-two years per audit partner. Similar experiences with community types. We have a lot of cities that we work with within Massachusetts. The experience of the assigned staff, the staff that has been assigned to the city's audit is rather senior, is seasoned. Obviously, there are new staff that are brought in every year, but I spend about eighty percent of the field work here myself. So you have a high degree of partner involvement. Related technical experience, again, we're thought leaders, lead a lot of the MSCPA conferences and discussions. We have a commitment to meeting deadlines. What's our problem-solving skills, and then our commitment to excellence, which I think I'd like to think that we do quite well in that area. Again, Mr. Lima touched upon in his presentation all the aspects of a financial statement audit there. Pretty much the same for every single firm, we have to follow a set guidelines.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So at this point, I'll ask the other two people, the other two groups to come down now, and you can all sit at the table together, and then open up the questions for my colleagues, and you can answer them as they're addressed to your particular company, if you don't mind. Councilor Seade, Councilor Sampson, I believe you had your hand up for us.
I just have some... Thank you, Council President. I just have a comment and then some questions for Haig and Sahadi. So first of all, let me just come out the gate and say Mary Sahadi, one of your partners on your firm, is an extremely intelligent and capable individual. I admire her. In fact, I'd love to see her come back as a CFO someday. She's amazing. With that being said, I do believe that she was the one who hired Roselli and Clark prior to being here. She is brilliant. My concern is, there are some concerns that I have with that, and I'm wondering what you think about that. Under your own CPA ethical guidelines and the code of conduct, under section integrity and objectivity, you know, when I read that, I have some concern there because it talks about auditing of a practice that you've seen, and not just a person, not the auditing, but even an agency. So when I read that language in there, I think that there may be some, our own code of ethic violation for CPA. And so that's a problem for me. What does that look like on the broader community? I understand and respect, first of all, I love my Fall River people. You're right down the street. You know, I would love nothing more, but I trust Mary Sahadi's judgment in the fact where she has put in Roselli and Clark that came before us. I question the own CPA code of conduct. I don't know. I'm sure you've read that, and it's been brought to your attention, and you may disagree. I have some concern there. So in no way, shape, or form does that reflect on my thoughts about Mary Sahadi's capability at all, but that coupled with the fact that it wasn't the lowest bidder, you know, I just have some really concerns there with what that looks like for the community at large, for her overseeing that, and for my vote. There, you know, there's a lot of other votes. So with that, Council President, I will yield, but thank you.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Councilor Seade, six.
With all due respect to my colleague in Seade, I think she asked Haig and Sahadi's firm a question, and they never answered it.
Well, they can answer it.
They don't have the right to answer it if they want to.
I would like to hear the answer because it's a valid question.
She yields. They can just let them answer it.
Oh, okay.
Would you like me to answer?
Yes.
Okay. So based on the conversation that I had with Mary, she's looked into the ethical standards that you've mentioned. She's called the Ethics Board, and they said that there shouldn't be an issue. I know she's been removed from City Hall for a number of years. Again, as I tried to make a point when we were making a presentation, you know, the transactions under audit are those transactions from fiscal twenty-four, and there shouldn't be any issues at this point based on that. While we do look at the beginning balances, you know, those were audited by Roselli and Clark, so, you know, we trust the fact that they're likely very accurate, and, you know, we'll just take it from there. We're awarded the contract. Does that answer your question?
That doesn't answer it. I disagree. The... Can I answer, or can I reply?
You should.
The... There shouldn't be a problem that. That's my trepidation here. There shouldn't be, you know, so I understand what you're saying. That's just my... There is, you know, eight other votes here, but that's just kind of where I stand. But with that, I highly respect your organization, but I have some problem there. So I yield, Council President.
Counselor, I think the point you're trying to make is that they're going to... One of these three groups will audit, do an audit of last year's budget, which Mary had no participation in, or the prior year or the prior year to that.
No, I understand that, but if there is some funding that could be down with some of the ARP funding that they're looking at, and it does say objectivity, even she's not... She doesn't even have her hands in on it, but in their own ethical guideline, it does state that an agency, if it's your agency, and so it's just the perception of that, how that looks, it just doesn't sit right with me. But that's just myself, and in no way, shape, or form on what I think about Mary Sahadi. Again, I think she's fantastic and make a great CFO for the CFO River.
I just have one question. So I understand everyone realizes who Mary Sahadi is and her relationship to this firm, but how do any of us know with any of these other companies has someone who worked in the government, said, "Well, it's now working for that firm as well"? So, and because they're auditing the books as was starting from last year, and Mary had no involvement in any of those prior years up until the time she left, it's... That's what's being audited. That's the only point.
Yeah, Council President, I just...
We disagree.
Yeah, we disagree on it, respectfully.
Thank you. Counselor Seade, four. Counselor Kilby.
Yes, I don't want to put words in Counselor Aide's mouth, but I think she's just going with her instincts a little bit.
Correct.
You know?
Yeah, we all do.
That's a good thing, so... But that's clear up for me. I was going to ask a question, and I withdrew it. The Council President allowed me to do that, and I was going to ask how back, how far back you go, and you answer the question. So you don't go back when she was here, so that's clear.
Correct. We only have to do like an opening balance audit, and then it's right into the year.
So that's clear up for me. So a full disclosure for me as well, I'm sure everyone's going to say it, Mary Sahadi's a small person. I like her very, very much. Matter of fact, your partner is my backyard neighbor. Funny story, his golden retriever snuck in my house last year. Okay, so, but that's not going to gear my decision here, okay? I think Counselor in seat one made a great point about the lowest bid here. And I'm showing my hand, okay? Maybe the dog won't come over anymore, I don't know. But I'm looking at this gentleman, these people, gentlemen, that twenty-five percent of your workload is other communities in the state? Twenty-five percent of cities and... Three hundred and sixty-five city and towns, or what? The numbers close, three sixty-seven?
Yeah, eighty into... It's like twenty-three percent.
Twenty-three percent.
Yeah, eighty to three fifty-one.
I think that's important, doing comparables, and I'm not a northerner, but comparing that whole workload that you have with the city of Fall River, and I see other gateway cities here as well. And your bid was the lowest bid. Was it? Yes, I believe it was.
I believe it was.
I don't know how much by how much, but I think Counselor Kadeem made a great point, and that's, I think, what we have to do here. So how long have you been doing the audits for the city right now?
Counselor Kilby, we've completed our fifth audit.
Okay. And I have no complaints about your performance. That would be a reason for me to change, you know, being... That would be my reason to change if there was some complaint. Every time you come in here, you answer our questions very professionally, very ethically, and I learned something today that the base that you have throughout the state is wonderful, and that's important. I know you haven't... That's very important to me. So I wasn't really going to ask any questions because, quite frankly, I made my decision prior to this. And the final question, okay, percentage-wise, the bid was lower. The second one, as I see you do our retirement system as well.
That is correct.
Is that separate? Is that a separate request for proposal?
No, that's included within this proposal. It is a separate engagement, it's a separate engagement letter, but it is, the pricing is all included in here. It's an all-in price.
Does any other firm at this table do both our audit and a retirement system in our city?
We do that for the city of New Bedford, but...
Not for...
Obviously not for it, yes.
Okay, so that's significant for me, too, that we have you doing, your firm doing both, and you've been consistent over the last five years, and your bid's the lowest. So I could easily say I'm voting for my neighbor. I could easily say I'm going to vote for Ms. Sahadi, who I do have respect for as well, but I don't think I'd be comfortable doing that. So you have my support, you have my vote. Thanks for coming down, and I'm actually glad that we're having these interviews because it just solidifies why I'm making the choice I'm making. That's the only reasons. There's no other reason. Okay? I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. That's why we have him. Counselor Seade, one. Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I just make a uncomfortable situation a little bit more uncomfortable and ask the administration to come down to the table? Just don't want you to miss out on the fun.
You can move those chairs to the end of the table. Counselor Kadeem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as I mentioned before, my line of question is not necessarily, I don't know how we got all entangled with Mary Sahadi, and this audit has become about Mary Sahadi, so I want to make sure it's not about Mary Sahadi, and it's about just doing the, performing the financial audits for the city. So as I mentioned, when this first came before us and we referred to finance committee, that this was exempt from thirty-B. So we followed, even though it's exempt, we don't need to go through a procurement process, but we chose to still go through with the procurement process. And from my understanding, that the inspector general, if you have a conversation with the inspector general, and you ask the question with regards to going through a procurement process, even though it's exempt, they would highly recommend that you continue to follow the procurement as if it were required. So that being said, I know you refer to it as an RFQ, but for thirty-B, it's an RFP process, so part of that... So the council is tasked with making a decision here, but in terms of the bid that went out, and I probably should have asked you this before, but it truly just came to me now, so I apologize, was there, is there any other evaluation criteria that was established in the RFP that these firms need to be evaluated on? Or is it solely just going to be price?
So the evaluation criteria in the RFP, well, I mean, there was more or less a rubric that everyone followed in their submission, which is why the submissions are somewhat similar. They answered the questions that were posed in the RFP, and it really did come down to price. price. While this is exempt from 30B, our ordinance does suggest that the council follows a competitive bid process, and then by putting out an RFP, I think we're sort of following the same guidance from the IG, which is that, once you put it in RFP, you really are now on track to be following 30B guidelines. And so at this point, even though I think, you know, not that my opinion really matters in this particular situation, while these interviews may be helpful, they're certainly outside of the scope of the RFP.
So there wasn't any criteria in terms of number of years, who's gonna be part of the staff, number of cities, or anything like that, that were, that was highlighted to be either advantageous, not advantageous, and that wasn't defined in the RFP, right?
You know, I don't have the, I mean, it's been a while since I've seen the RFP.
I'm glad you can answer that question.
Yeah.
That was not defined.
It was not, okay, so I just, because I want to make sure that if that's, if that was one of the criteria that was established in the RFP, then obviously, as a, as a council, we need to follow that, and so I just want to make sure that that's being followed. That's, that's the only reason I ask that, because I know people are having discussion about instinct and everything along those lines. I guess what I would, would say is, is that everybody's gonna have to follow, you know, generally accepted accounting practices anyways, right? So all three firms, all three firms have a great reputation, have performed audits within the Commonwealth, also in Rhode Island. So from my standpoint, to me, I would assume, and this is just my own personal opinion, that if there is no evaluation criteria for us to be able to, which has been established prior to, you know, the RFP going out, then it comes down to price, right? So from, from my standpoint, anything outside of that, I think, you know, could potentially have a protest, not suggesting that any of the firms would, would protest. So I don't necessarily have any particular questions for the firms, I think they're all reputable. I'm happy that we had three qualified firms that, that came before us. I guess what I will, will say, and we'll, we'll take a vote, but it, you know, comes back down to the financial policies that we, we have discussed, because I know some, some of my colleagues do have some concerns, which are legitimate questions about the number of years, you know, an audit firm should, should be conducting an audit for, for a community. I think part of our financial policy should establish whether that's six years, eight years, nine years, 12 years. I think it would just make it a lot easier for the city council to be able to make these types of decisions. I don't, I don't necessarily believe that we should be moving on from a, from an audit firm after six years, because I know how much work it takes for the initial contracts, establishing that, that first year, and then just having the work that's put in for year two and three, that it makes more sense to at least have a two-year contract. So at a minimum, I think six years is where we should be. Now whether that goes to nine or 12 years, I think somewhere along the line, that needs to be mutually agreed upon by, you know, the administration, and if it's our responsibility to make the, the decision on the audit firm, then I think the council should have some input, but I think if we had that in place, then it would alleviate some of this discussion that's before us. So that's all I'll say. I don't necessarily have any particular questions for the firms, so I yield.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor, seat six, Counsel Panti.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just a couple of questions for our current firm. Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates. First off, I, I want to make sure that in your current scope that you're currently performing for the city council by way of the city of Fall River, because the council pays for this audit, I just want to make everybody aware of that. This isn't necessarily an audit that is on the city, this is the city council's responsibility by the charter to make sure that we're conducting an independent audit of the city's finances, okay? So that's, that's my first comment. Have your audits, all been, with the exception of the COVID year, been submitted to the administration on time?
The financial statements have been presented within 270, 270 days of year-end, which is required for your continuing disclosures each and every year.
Is that by charter, or is that by municipal law?
That's, you need to have the 270 days, that's for the continuing disclosures that are submitted to the, as part of your fundraising, going out to the public with your general obligation bonds.
Okay, all right. I was just asking, so you, so they have submitted them timely? Yeah? Okay. I was just asking, I don't know when it comes to RFPs or RFQs, if change orders are a possibility. Have you ever, in your experiences, seen an audit firm, their scope of work tend to increase, and a change order would be possible through the purchasing, RFP, RFQ process?
So before there's a response, and those responses are open, you can certainly have amendments, but once there are responsive bids to the RFP, executing a change order really kind of moves the goalpost, right? That's not something you would ordinarily see.
Okay, so that answered my question as well. Look, I, I can count, so I don't want to sit here and belabor the point, I can count to five still, that hasn't changed. But one thing I want to look back at and recognize is that I did initially object to just moving on from the lowest bidder, due to the fact that this is a five-year contract, it's almost a million dollars, and I wanted, as one counselor, I wanted to hear from all of the firms that submitted their RFP to the city council, so I could hear what their scope, you know, more about their firm and about their scope. Some, some, some of my colleagues and I, who I respect very much, want to make this about a former CFO who was here, that's not what I was looking for. I was looking for more of an honest debate about where we're going as, as a city council, because this is our audit, and I wanted to make sure that we heard it loud and clear about what these firms are going to do for the city council and the taxpayers. So I, I just, I just want to make it that I feel that regardless of the city council's vote tonight, that we did our job tonight by hearing the firms that are submitting over a million dollar, almost a million dollar RFQ to the city council, and I think that needs to be a practice that we have going forward when this contract is up, after the votes are tabulated here tonight, in terms of where everybody's going. So I, I'm hopeful that that could be a process that the council can adopt going forward, because I think this is important. To my colleague in seat one who commented, and I know a couple of others have also commented that all three of these, all three of the firms before us are reputable, respected, and honorable firms. So any comments given by any of the colleagues tonight that were, may have been directed at an individual person, I want to just have the record reflect from my standpoint that all of the firms are reputable, the people in the firms are reputable, the people in the firms hold CPA licenses and have code of ethics that they need to adhere to for their own license. So I want to state that as well, so for now, I'll yield. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. I don't think any council was trying to downplay one firm better than the other, I just think there was questions that they were concerned with. I only have one que, Counsel, seat five, Counsel Vice President Perera.
Yep, the only question that I would have, and I agree that every firm is very reputable, the question that I would, would have, is I do have family members that are auditors and friends, and one of the questions that they said was, do you know if all these firms, I guess there's something called a yellow book, where everyone who audits needs to have 80 hours every two years? Does every single person in these three firms have that? Just questioning that.
Yeah, so our team, we have to do the 80 hours every two years, every individual who works on the audit, and a certain number of those hours actually has to be focused on municipal finance.
They have to have that?
Yeah.
Mr. Roselli?
Same for our firm as well.
And your firm?
Yes, we acquire the same CPE as the other firms do. From a staffing perspective, everyone in our firm who's supervisor or above would be certified by both of the council.
That was basically the only question I had. And over the past five years, since Roselli and Clark has been doing audits here, I have called to ask a question, and people at that firm were very responsive to the questions that I had, and, and I appreciate it, and I thank you for that. To my colleague to my left, who talked about, you know, maybe we should do this more often every five years when we're looking for an audit, perhaps the council should be charged with doing the RFP. Is there something else of the RFP that maybe the council would want? That's just a suggestion for the future. That might work, but I think that myself, I have to go with the lowest bid, because every single one of you is gonna do the same job that the city needs to have done. And I haven't had an issue with the auditing firm that we have, so that's all I have to say, and thank you all, I think you all do a wonderful job, and I don't think that I would ever want to be an auditor, because that's like too focused for me. So I thank you that you have the ability to stay focused and do that. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. I just have one question for all three firms, and just throw the number out there, you don't have to mention what municipalities or towns it is, but how many municipalities or towns you currently do the audits for now? Do you currently do the audit for now? Just, just curious to all three. Is it 10 cities and towns, 15, 20, 25?
Answering for Roselli, Clark &amp; Associates, we do 80 cities and towns in Massachusetts.
Thank you. The next group, please.
So Mark, including our personal accounting authority practice in the governmental units that's over 500 engaged in doing.
Okay, thank you, next.
Hague, Sahadi, including cities, towns, special districts, et cetera, we're at 40 entities a year.
Thank you very much. Counselor, seat two, did you have your hand up?
Yes. Basically, I only have one comment, and of course, as usual, it's me. So according to the charter, the year, city charter, at least every five years, the city council shall conduct a competitive procurement process to retain these auditing services. The city council did not perform, the, the city council did not do that, the administration did. So do we have a problem? With that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Counselor.
Question for another day, or we thank you.
I, I want to thank all three firms for coming down, and I think your presentations were very professional, respectful, and I want to thank you all for coming down. Thank you. There's no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to refer the item to full council?
Second.
Motion to refer to full council has been made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor, seat four, Counsel Kilby?
I would ask that we take that item first, I think we have two counselors, one that is not feeling well, and another had a medical emergency.
We can, we can make the motion when the council meeting starts, Counsel.
Just want to give your.
To take it out of order, that's right.
Okay.
All right. Motion has been made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, move on to item number three, we have an appropriate transfer that the sum of $100,000 be the same as hereby transferred to opioid settlement revolving fund from opioid stabilization fund. Any questions?
No.
Motion full council?
It's already in full council, Counsel, that's right, just a discussion. Item number six on the agenda, next transfer, in accordance with provisions of Chapter 44, Section 32 of Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriation to the Honorable Body, that the sum of $6,400,000 be in the same as hereby transferred and to the stabilization fund from the fiscal year '23 shareholders revenue. Counselor, seat six, Counsel Panti, question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Can the administration come down for this?
Sure.
Clarify, explain what this is? $6.4 million transfer. Ms. Altman, could you explain what this is, $6.4 million transfer is for the public and for the council?
So the $6.4 million is the balance remaining of the free cash that was certified for this year, and so we're moving it to our stabilization fund, that we need to do that before June 30th.
Okay, I understand that. Out of curiosity, how was it that, which is good budget practicing, I can add, that we were able to have $6.4 million of free cash in FY '23?
So.
That's, that's a, that's a high number, so.
If I may, Counsel, just for part of clarification, I think the amount was higher than that, this is what's left, correct?
This is the balance that's left, yes.
Could you tell us what the entire ba, what the.
It was 15.9 or, it was over, just over 15 million.
Thank you.
Is that, in your experience, is that high to see almost $16 million in free cash?
So it's not typical of prior years, but it's typical of what's been going on in Massachusetts currently. So there was many municipalities, and I wasn't prepared, but I do have that, that had significantly high free cash certifications this year.
What, and what's, what's the, what's the main reason for that, in your experience and what you've seen?
Well, so there was a lot of ARPA money that was being put into cities and towns, so there was a lot of, we personally had investment income, significantly high investment income, so our revenues came in higher than budgeted, and we also had some turnbacks in our, on our expense side due to, there was a lot of vacancies that weren't filled.
Are you expecting that kind of a surplus going into, in the year that was just passed by the council?
I mean, we're, the year that was just passed.
Yeah, the budget that was just passed, it starts July first.
That's a little premature to know that at this point.
Okay. All right, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Ms. Altman, I do have a question. On the investments that we were able to generate, thank God that the interest rates, you know, are where they are, are we gonna continue that type of aggressive investments in, or not, I shouldn't say aggressive, are we gonna continue that? Do we have the ability to do that again? Or is that something that just the ARPA money allowed us to do it? Do we?
So the ARPA money allowed us to, to put a significant amount of cash into, to work for the city. We, as the ARPA money is being spent, we're monitoring those cash flows, we do expect that to start to tickle off.
Yeah.
But we are, we're, we're monitoring cash flows on projects so that we're not expending out the city's money, so that we can continue to make the money work. I mean, the, the plan is to keep growing the stabilization fund so that we can have investment income that we can use yearly to then do like, you know, buy police cars and do those, those capital purchases, and we're trying to move away from just borrowing for those kinds of things.
Yeah, no, I get it, I, I think it's a good plan, if it can make it work, and if we don't have to break the backs of all the residents in the meantime. But I, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we were able to invest that money, I give you kudos for that, invest the money, and when the interest rates are high, yeah, let's invest it and get it, and take advantage of that ARPA money that wasn't being used. How much more, how much ARPA money is there left that we can use to continue to invest?
I think we have over $30 million invested of ARPA money still.
And when do we have to spend the ARPA money by, next year or this?
The cash has to be spent by 2026.
Okay.
So the obligation is, is December 31st.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Any further questions? Counselor, seat one, Counsel Kadeem?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just in terms of the opioid stabilization fund, so taking $100,000 into the revolving fund, so did we already establish the revolving fund?
It's in your packet to establish tonight.
Oh, okay, so what's the spending limits you, that we're looking at?
It's 500,000 that we, it's in the, you should have it in your packet.
Apparently haven't looked at it.
So we, talking to the Health Department and along with the opioid stabiliz, the committee that's formed, and the, the rest of the administration, they believe 500,000 would be a good, I mean, if we have to explain more, we come back.
Yeah, so I guess my, my question would be that, you know, obviously, the opioid stabilization fund has very specific restrictions, right, and it's gonna require two-thirds votes to come out. Why wouldn't we just put the $2 million into the revolving fund? Just, and obviously, there's a limit for how much can be spent on a year, but then that.
So right now.
Then you don't need to come back to the, to the council for any type of transfers or anything like that.
So if you move it all into the revolving fund, then you also can't use the stabilization investment? So by having some of it, having it in stabilization fund, we're investing that, and we, we're trying to, you know.
Yep, all right. Without a yield, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. There being no further questions, thank you very much. Unless you want to state it, the case is one for the next, for the appropriation, it's up to you. Move on to item 7A, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 32 of Massachusetts General Laws, I recommend the following appropriation to the Honorable Body, that the sum of $551,077.75 be in the same as hereby appropriated to EMS salaries in amount of $297,922.75, and EMS health insurance in amount of $253,155 for the sum, for the EMS fund free cash. Any questions?
No.
Maintain a motion, that's in full body ready, so.
Full council.
Motion's made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, appropriations and the transfers. Last, we have two more individuals that have signed up. Caesar, Carlos Caesar, subject matter, proposition two and a half, over.
Mr. President, city councils, good night. I'm so happy for the good news that we taxpayer got overtaxed $16 million, I'm so happy for that. I'm here tonight as Fall River residents. I'm here tonight as Fall River Residence Taxpayer and Neighborhood Leader to oppose not only the proposed placing of a ballot question considering proposing two over, or two and a half override, but any consideration of additional increasement in new taxes until our government can get its financials housed in order. Until there is a full accountability, transparency, and fiscal restraint, not one more penny of our money should be spent. This administration has in two plus terms never made any meaningful attempt to control spending. Even the slightest attempt to control spending, tighten the belt, or be transparent about any of our financial liabilities has been in void like the pledge. The threat to people's, to public safety is unbelievable, and it's obvious that this administration likes to threaten the city council and the people. Do we know how much we pay for DURFI? Or how much we pay in lawsuits and anything in between? All this and more remains hiding from the taxpayers whose money is paying the bills. And now you want us to give you more? And if you don't, you will try to say that it's our fault because we didn't give you more money to hide. Until you, as our body, legislative body, stop robbing, stamping, the mayor's taxing and spending without accountability will never stop. These things as such, contracts without insurance, we have the ability to pay, without knowing if we have the ability to pay. These things, and I quote, "We are looking at some investments down the road," end quote, and admitting that the fact that we could be laying off personnel down the road, yet you still vote to spend money we don't have. This is exactly what brought us over here to a place where we would, would now again ask the taxpayers and the citizens of Fall River to pay bills again.
Yeah, 15 seconds.
Asking us to vote an override for a project that you didn't even allow us to vote in the first place. The only investment that will save Fall River is investing in people of Fall River, not to those who hope will someday leave here, or to who, or those that take their profits.
Mr. Caesar?
Or those to take the profits away from our city. Thank you, city councils.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just can't go without making a comment of what his open statement was, that the residents of Fall River overtaxed $15 million. Counselor C6 asked a question to CFO, how did we come up with this surplus money? And she clearly stated that a large part of that money was money that we invested the ARPA money and gained a huge amount of interest. So it wasn't overtaxed, it was money that was generated through an investment that they made, a large part of that. Now, we can ask the administration at some point in time to break down how many vacancies were returned back and also put into the budget savings, but it was not $15 million what people were overtaxed. And we sat right there and heard what she said. She gave an honest answer to an honest question. I don't want anyone to come down here and misconstrue that into something else, because it's not fair to the residents that are watching this thinking they were overtaxed by $15 million. Next, no clapping, please. I didn't do that for applause. I just wanted to make a clear statement. Next, we have Nelson Vasquez, subject matter, Fall River.
Good evening, Council President, and good evening, city councilors. You know, when Jezzo left office, I think his last budget stood at, I think about $13 million, it rounded off. And I looked at the recent budget that passed, and I believe it was a little over $400 million, $430 something million. And we are basically, I think, $64 million or close to that to crossing the threshold of $500 million, half, almost half of a billion dollars for a municipal budget coming soon, because it appears that this government does not have the desire to rein into the spending and tighten the belt. Because if you continue operating in this fashion, you're going to continue squeezing the taxpayer, and that has a human toll. And look, I'm not a homeowner yet, but you don't need to be a homeowner to stand up for homeowners. That squeezing the taxpayer causes a lot of economic hardship on them, and pretty soon it's going to price them out of their homes that they've paid for through blood, through blood, sweat, and tears. And it's just sad when you see numerous homeowners put their tax bills online in full disclosure to show the obscene increases just in two years. I mean, an 80, 40-year-old who's on social security is saying that she can't even bother to fathom to pay the bills that ever increase, including the water and sewer, sewer rates. And now the city is attempting to place another question on the ballot that I believe the city did not follow the proper procedures for the DURFI vote, because the ballot clearly explains the, how the city didn't follow the procedures there, and now this. So you're talking about two schools, all the tax increases, two and a half. The question is, when is enough going to be enough? And when is there going to be a strive to tighten the belt? Because sooner or later, you know, the homeowners, they're not ATM machines. They don't have unlimited funds. Pretty soon, they're going to be so constrained, and quite frankly, big government comes at a cost, and that just cannot be sustained. But I'll end with this. You know, all this stuff talking about, you know, property taxes and stuff going up, it appears to me that this city is assigning very questionable property assessments. And to me, I looked at one, you know, you have a property here, luxury building. This one is, I believe, is over 20,000 square feet.
30 seconds, Counselor.
Yes, sir. So since I don't have the time, but in the coming months, this information will come up, because I believe that the taxpayers are getting disrespected, and this type of practice cannot continue at all, and it is an absolute disgrace as to the numbers that I just seen just now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nelson.
Thank you. There being no further business for finance?
Motion adjourned.
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Clerk informed that she did receive a letter from someone who wants to have his request, so she will read since it's a good time was written to, sent to the office. May I look? Can also identify who it was.
City Council President, members of the city council, my name is CJ Ferry, and I reside at 300 Buffington Street and am a property owner and Fall River taxpayer. Over the past couple of years, the city, with the consent of the city council, has increased the city budget and the spending of the authoritarian government on the sixth floor. The resulting taxes and fees are bankrupting our property owners and is resulting in higher and higher rents, which increase homelessness. When this administration gets a no from the city council or any other body, they continue to press with representing the same requests in hopes that you will give in. Before you tonight is a request to place on the ballot a proposition two and a half override to be presented to the voters. This is unacceptable, and the fact that the city council president would allow items such as this proposition two and a half override be presented again is unacceptable and shows a lack of fortitude, or as it is known in the real world, no backbone. The city council president should recall that he was the lead in not supporting a debt exclusion or proposition two and a half override, and the council denied this request before. Any claims that the school will not be built, or it is for the children, are false, as the school is already under construction and will be built regardless of how the city pays for it. The taxpayers have lost faith in the council and already feel overtaxed because of the excessive spending of the administration. The Fall River taxpayer still does not know how much they're paying for the debt exclusion, as it still does not appear on a tax bills. Where is the transparency? Before the city council or the administration starts to look at more taxes to feed its excess, excessive spending, a good hard look at the number of positions and pay increases that have been given by the administration. We saw in the budget hearings that the administration hires people for positions not in ordinance, and when a city counselor tried to eliminate that line item, that council was guilted into leaving the item in places as they would not receive a paycheck. The fact that the illegal hiring was going to no longer receive a paycheck from the city is the fault of the authoritarian administration. How many people were hired with ARPA funds and are now being put into the budget, which the city cannot afford? I would suggest that you review the minutes of the Fall River Retirement Board, where the CFO for the city said that they, the city cannot afford its retirement contributions, and the city is asking for concessions from collective bargaining units. No concessions have been requested. Fall River can no longer afford excess taxation and threats to public safety need to stop. If the administration desires to cut public safety, that is his choice, but remember, you are not holding him accountable. I ask that you not consider the request for a prop two and a half override and table it or deny it outright. I know that there are at least three bobbleheads that will vote for it because it's proposed by the administration. It is obvious that they have forgotten who they represent, the people. I will remind you what Joseph Camara said when it came before the council before. We built all those new schools without a debt exclusion until DURFI. It is time to take control of the taxes and not allow the increase by an apparent authoritarian leader. Respectfully, CJ Ferry.
Thank you. I stand by what I said. We did build all the schools without debt exclusion.
I have one question, please.
Counselor C4, Counselor Kadeem?
We, I don't know, maybe this is a question for another time, the full corporation counsel or assistant corporation counsel. I don't want them to come down now. But we've always had citizens input, and we had individuals show up, and then that changed because of COVID. So I understand in terms of some people who maybe can't physically come, but we really don't know. We have, we have a name, but, and an address and a letter, but we really have no verification of who it came from.
Right, you could have wrote that letter by his name to it.
Yeah, I could put Charlie Chaplin there. So it's just something to be discussed, especially when things are inflammatoryly said.
I agree.
And it's like, send it an email or pass it a note in high school, and you're not here to say.
To your point, Counselor, I agree with you.
It's easy to ridicule someone and not be here.
I think there was a time in the past.
It just doesn't make sense.
Former Corporation Counsel Macy made a judgment that letters formally written were to be addressed by the council. I'm not sure. Was it during COVID?
Well, that's my point. I don't want to, but it's a question for another day.
I wasn't here during COVID. I was absent those two years.
Okay, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Motion to adjourn finance.
Counselor C1, Counselor Kadeem?
Yeah, so, I mean, if we're going to ask the question to the corporation counsel, I think there's an ADA standpoint from that, I believe, right?
I believe it's true.
So if anybody has any type of handicap, they have the authority to submit the letter, so, I mean, I don't, I don't think we sit there and, you know, ask for doctor's notes in terms of somebody's disability. So I think the assumption would be that there probably may be a handicap, but that's just my assumption, so.
And this individual probably fits that criteria. Thank you, Counselor.
Motion to adjourn finance?
Second.
Motion to adjourn finance has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Council Committee on Finance is now adjourned. You guys want to take one, two minute recess?
No, we're good. Let's go.
Okay. I have it your way. Regular city council meeting will begin. Let me call the robe.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Herrera?
Here.
Ponti?
Here.
Repozzo?
Yep.
Sampson?
Here.
And President Camara?
Here. Will everyone in the council chair please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am Clerk?
Mr. President, can we take number 10 out of order?
One second, one second, one second. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit this meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Thank you, ma'am clerk. Counselor C5, Counselor Perri, want to take one second out of order?
Just to ask that we would take item 10, the citation, out of order for individuals that are here.
Motion to take item 10 out of order has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And also the item that was referred from finance with regards to the order.
Let's do one at a time, Counselor, please.
Okay, I just wanted to get it.
Item, motions for item 10 out of order has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item is now out of order. Ma'am Clerk?
And the item before you is a citation from the city council for Christopher Sylvia in recognition of community engagement and outreach.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt citation has been made and seconded. On the motion, Counselor C7, eight, Counselor Sampson, you want to?
I want to speak on this for a minute.
Do you want to make a presentation? You can come up.
Yeah, I'll head.
You can come down if you like. The recipient is.
I'd love for Christopher to come down, because this is mind-boggling to me, and I know to many of my colleagues what has, what you have been able to accomplish and a movement that you've started in the community. Christopher Silva owns Christopher's on South Main Street, and he has, and his husband, Nate, who has single-handedly been able to move a community as a constituent. I have never seen so many community members, community leaders, former council members, so many people just come together to beautify the community under your leadership, under what the movement that you've started. If you've seen what he's done, people are reaching out to you, you're planting flowers in neighborhoods. You have now moved from the South End, you've moved your movement to the other part of the Flint section. You are beautifying the Flint neighborhood, things that have never been done that I have ever seen in my community, and it is a real movement. And hundreds and hundreds of people are reaching out to you, and I know that I wanted to acknowledge you, my colleagues, my colleagues that live in the South End, what we see you doing is amazing. And so we want to recognize you and Nate for your excellence in providing community service, assisting the needs, and motivating others to work and improve the city. You don't get paid for it. People are following you. You are energizing people. You are what this community needs. You are a true community leader. And I should say, the biggest toy drive in this city has ever seen was done by you. You filled up your place four times and got recognition for it. So I am grateful to have you as a fellow community member. Thank you for all that you've done, and this is well deserved. Thank you.
Ma'am Clerk? Counselor, you want to take the next one out of order?
Yes, please. The item referred from finance regarding the order.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on June 25th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be referred to the full council for action. So this would be the order that selects the independent auditing services of a particular firm, so.
Motion to go with the existing order, Roselli.
Motion has been made, stay with the existing order, Roselli. Need and seconded?
Just a.
On the motion, Counselor C1, have your hand up?
Just a question. So what number is that?
It's after the, the clerk just.
It's the item from finance. It's the committee report.
Oh, it's on the committee reports. Can I just, can I make a motion just to waive the rules so I can have the administrator come down? Just, a colleague in C2 did, I think it was more of a statement than a question in terms of what the charter, how the charter read. So we did not get a response, but I don't want to leave that statement at least undiscussed in terms of whether or not we're violating the charter, so.
Can you, is a motion to waive the rules has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Corporation counsel?
If he's here.
Seth plays an attorney on TV anyways.
You've got to prepare for a case. Good job.
So just in terms of. So just in terms of, oh shit.
So I think the question was, do we have a problem? No, we don't, and here's why. There's a practical answer and there's also a legal answer. The practical answer is that there's a number of things that the council, even though it certainly, you know, there's a, a bunch of incredibly accomplished, smart people in the council, just doesn't have the, um, the experience or the personnel to do, right? And one of those things is that even though, um, the ordinance says, and actually if you, if you read the, if you read the whole paragraph, it, it says three different things, really. Um, you know, shall provide for is the first sentence and then it says, at the very end, shall conduct a competitive bid process and then in the middle, uh, it says shall choose. And I would argue that those are all three different things at different points in the competitive bid process. All that said, uh, is that, um, this is something where there's a function within the city to send out an RFP and conduct a competitive bid process that we did on behalf of the council. And what's important about that is that the RFP itself does say, on behalf of the City Council, this is what you're being asked to bid on. Um, and, um, so that's sort of the, the legal answer is that it was couched in the context of it was on behalf of the council. Um, the practical answer is that if the council were to conduct their own competitive bid process, I don't know that without some consultation with the folks that do our purchasing work here, they would be in a position to send out a valid RFP and actually get bids back. Not through anybody's fault, that's just, it's just a, you know, it's a difficult kind of, you know, it's a complex process. I mean, I know, uh, Counselor Sampson has done a lot of procurement, uh, I know, uh, Counselor Kadeem has done procurement, different folks have interacted within different ways, but to actually get an RFP out, I think would have been a difficult thing, so we did it.
Thank you, I'm good with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for coming down and explaining that. Thank you, Seth. Motion to adopt, Roselli has been made in seconded.
Roll call.
Roll call.
On the order which would select Roselli, Clark and Associates to provide independent financial audit services, Counselor Kadeem?
Yes.
Dionne?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
No.
Repoza?
No.
Sampson?
Yes.
President Kamara?
No.
Motion carries.
Ma'am clerk?
Item number one on your agenda is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Talos Ferris as the city's Veterans Agent.
Motion to confirm?
Second.
Second.
Motion confirmed has been made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Will he come down, so?
Sure, he'll come down.
This is the new VSO.
Congratulations.
Motion to lift item two from the table.
Second.
Motion to lift item number two from the table has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, motion to confirm.
Second.
Motion to confirm has been made and seconded.
David Underhill, I'm sorry.
On the motion, Counselor C one, Counselor Kadeem?
Uh, no, Mr. President, at the last meeting, I just asked that this be tabled just to, to confirm that the vote was taken by the residents to reappoint David Underhill. I had just heard that, that wasn't the case. Um, after having a conversation with the administration, they did confirm that the residents did vote for the, um, reappointment or confirmation of the reappointment for David Underhill, so I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion to confirm has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ma'am clerk?
Item three is a communication from the mayor and an order accepting a vehicle donation from Jennifer Gergel of a 2006 Nissan Altima for the fire department.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four is a communication from the mayor and an order establishing a revolving fund within the Health and Human Services Department. Um, this would be, um, for the opioid settlement revolving fund.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five is a communication from the mayor and an order transferring $100,000 to the opioid settlement revolving fund from the opioid stabilization fund.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item six is the mayor's communication and an order that the sum of $6,400,000 be and the same is hereby transferred to the stabilization fund from the FY23 surplus revenue.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven is a communication from the mayor and in order, um, and resolution with the drafted ballot question relative to the new Diamond Vocational Technical High Schools.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded.
Roll call.
On the motion, Counselor C two, Counselor Dionne.
Yeah, I just wanna make a couple of comments. Honestly, I've gone back and forth, back and forth on this and, um, way in the beginning, I wanted this to go to the voters, that they should have had the decision whether the school would be built, wouldn't be built, if they wanted to fund it. Fast forward to today, essentially, that decision was taken out of their hands and at this point, the only decision is now do you wanna reach into your pocket and pay more money? So I find myself now on the opposite side of that for that reason. They should have, they should, to me, they always should have had the choice of yes, they wanna build it, yes, we wanna fund it. They only got half of, that, only half of that was awarded to them, which is, do you wanna pay for it? And, um, and I do have to agree that when the debt exclusion for Durfee, um, they were, everybody was told it was gonna be on your tax bills, it was gonna be on your tax bill. You would know how much Durfee was costing you, you would know how much your taxes were increased. That's never happened and people complain about that all the time, that nobody knows how much they're paying on their tax bill strictly for Durfee. And I think the same thing is gonna happen with Diamond and I don't think that's fair as a taxpayer and as people who represent the taxpayers, I don't think it's fair that people don't know what these things ultimately cost them each year. So with that, I yield.
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion for the Committee on Finance has been made, is there a second?
Second.
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 The only question I have is there some type of timeline that we're dealing with here?
Oh.
With regard to getting it on a ballot and is there?
Motion to waive the rule, the election commissioner is here.
Second.
Motion to waive the rules has been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ryan, can you come up, please?
If there's a timeline that he needs it by. Mr. Lyons, is there a timeline?
Please state your name, please, or we know, we know who you are, Ryan, please state your name for record.
Sure, the only question I'm gonna ask. Sure, Ryan Lyons, Chairman and Director of the Board of Elections.
Thank you.
Yes, I have to submit the order to Secretary Galvin by August 7th. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I second the motion.
Motion for the finance, it's already been, it's already been seconded. Motion to refer to finance has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ballot question correct?
No, we're good.
To refer?
Correct, to finance. Okay.
And to my reasoning for, um, second, Counselor Kadeem's motion.
It already passed, Mr. President.
May I just make a, a quick comment? Please have tolerance for me.
I'm trying.
I know it's hard.
Make your point, Counselor.
I'll, I'll wait for finance, I just had a question with regard to the specificity of the question. That's all, I can wait.
Perfect. Counselor C one, Counselor Kadeem?
Um, can I just, just a point of order, um, so item number four, we approved to establish the, um, sorry, revolving fund, but in the letter before us, there's a spending limit. Uh, we, was the motion including the spending limit of $500,000?
Yes. The order includes this.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that that was the case.
Good point, Counselor. All right, let's make it official, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed?
All for two.
Motion carries, as it did the first time. Ma'am clerk?
Whereas the Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority commuter rail trail tracks will soon be operational for locomotive testing within the city of Fall River and whereas train tracks are often challenging to access for large emergency vehicles such as ambulances and fire engine trucks and whereas the public safety of the commuters on the train, pedestrians around the area of the train tracks and all first responders are of utmost importance during the development and the future regular operation of the MBTA commuter rail trains. Now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Public Safety convene with the police chief, fire chief, representative from Massachusetts Bay Transit Authority and any other interested parties to discuss ongoing responder training in relation to the new rail system, information that should be provided to the general public regarding safety around locomotives both on foot and in vehicles and plans to increase security for all who use, reside near or commute within the area of the new MBTA commuter rail zones.
Motion to adopt, second.
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item nine is a citation, um, celebrating the 90th birthday of Lenny Nicolin.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt citation has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The order granting commission to, um, Mass Electric doing business as National Grid for the three new jointly owned pole locations and one new jointly owned anchor on Robin Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The police chiefs report on licenses.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt chief's report on licenses has been made, is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have a number of claims.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion for the Corporation Council has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have minutes of the, uh, joint planning board meeting with the City Council.
Motion to accept, place on file.
Motion to accept, minutes to place on file has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to take items 15 through 22 together.
Motion to take item 15 through 22 together, ma'am, is there a motion to take them together?
Yep.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ma'am clerk, can you read items 15 through 22, please?
Sure. We have minutes of the public hearing, um, held on June 3rd, public hearings held on June 11th, Committee on Finance meetings held on June 3rd, June 4th, June 5th, June 10th, June 11th and the City Council meeting of June 11th.
Motion to approve all minutes.
Motion to approve all minutes has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For items that were presented after the agenda deadline, we have the appropriation order in the amount of $551,077.75 appropriated from the EMS Enterprise Fund FY23 Free Cash. $297,922.75 would be appropriated to EMS salaries. $253,155 would be appropriated to EMS health insurance.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Have an open meeting law complaint.
Motion to accept, place on file. Seconded.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Committee on Ordinance is in legislation at a meeting held on June 25th, 2024, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance accompanied by an emergency preamble be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled and passed to be ordained with Counselor Hart absent and not voting.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble.
Motion to adopt emergency preamble has been made and seconded, is there a second? Second, roll call, on the emergency preamble.
On the emergency preamble, Counselors Kadeem?
I'm sorry, yes.
Dionne?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Ponti?
Yes.
Repoza?
Yes.
Sampson?
Yes.
And President Kamara?
Yes.
Motion to pass through all readings.
Motion to pass through all readings has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mister, Mister President.
Entertainer motion to go back to the open meeting law complaint, we just can't accept it and place it on file.
Uh, we refer to Corporation Council.
We have to get a response to that, so a motion to reconsider.
Made.
Has been made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council.
Motion to refer to Corporation Council has been made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, on the motion, Counselor, I'm sorry, Counselor seats six, Counselor.
Yeah, I, I have a comment, we all received a letter on our desks tonight regarding a petition to council members, um, for the national movement underway to cut back on quality of life policing methods such as making arrests for vandalism, littering, loitering, vagrants, et cetera. Uh, as a registered voter, I urge you to maintain the quality of life policing methods and vigorously defend these methods, uh, et cetera. Could this be referred to the Committee on Public Safety?
It was formally presented to you.
Or does it, do I have to put it in the form of a resolution?
Yeah, it hasn't been formally, formally presented to us, so yes, just a letter.
Oh, it, it said the 25th.
It's not on the agenda and it was not formally, it's not on tonight's agenda and it wasn't formally presented.
All right, so the 16th, we'll take it up. I just hate that somebody, you know, a list of citizens send it.
It's safer to file a resolution, Counselor, based on the letter you received.